Okay. Are you staying? Okay. Please hold. We're good?
Yep.
Okay, we've got a call. The committee have called for exception to orders. We're going to forego the pledge of allegiance, but we will have to do the roll call again. Sorry.
No, this is great. Mrs. Albright. Mrs. Bell. Mrs. Gottfried. Mrs. Leoni. Mr. Miller. Mrs. Olafson.
Here.
Mr. Scott here. Mr. Struble.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson. All present.
Alright, thank you. Again, procedures for public participation are the same as what I said a second ago. And if... We have some announcements. Agenda edits, I believe. Never mind, they've already added it. There will be an executive session after the meeting to discuss personnel. And we do have superintendent support.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to publicly share with the board that our high school administrative administration has started looking at some possible alternate viable options for offering a prom late in the spring for our students. Details and logistics have not yet been defined, however, we wanted to make sure that we form the board that we're looking at some type of experience for our students. I'm not quite sure what that is, but obviously they will be falling within the guides of what the Department of Health, the Commonwealth puts out. So, that along with the commencement ceremony, also that too is being reviewed in the sense that, again, looking to provide some type of in-person experience for our graduates for Class 2021. Again, many details and logistics have to be defined. And again, taking into account anticipated flexibility with whatever guidance from the Department of Health is provided for us. There's an update on our confirmed COVID-19 positive cases within the district. They continue to decline, and obviously along with that, the number of requisite quarantines continue to decline. We will, as an administrator, continue to the eye of the return from spring break as a possible date to provide full in-person instruction of our secondary buildings, which would basically be bringing our Group A, Group Bs together while continuing to offer all current learning options for our district families. Again, I mentioned that earlier at the meeting and wanted to give you an update that we continue to monitor COVID cases and the quarantine of our students and where we're at. I wanted to also give public recognition to our professional staff, support staff, our contracted service providers, administration for the continued contributions to our students and families in this year. Obviously been a challenge, continuing to navigate those challenges that we experienced through this pandemic, but I think that the work that has been done has been nothing short of remarkable and proud of our Bladed Learning Community for the efforts that have been put forth. So it does, has been taking the team effort for our students. They've been outstanding and conforming, following the guidelines that have been put in place in our health and safety plan as well as our community members. So, I'm proud of that fact. And then the last item is the Commonwealth has, the governor has issued a preliminary budget that has called for significant increases in our basic ed funding and our special education funding. However, it is still early. That makes it difficult, as with any budget year, for us to surmise any increase in our district state allocations, but at this point, as a result of the uncertainty, you'll find the budget, the preliminary budget, obviously still has some work with it. Currently has flat funding in it, included in it without anything that preliminary budget called for. And that's, again, just to continue to keep us safe as far as budgeting purposes concerned of fiscal responsibility of our constituents. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Any comments or questions from the board on Dr. Cooper's report? Okay, so we have guests. We were waiting on a presentation by the United Champions Group on Unified Track.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Eileen Chumman, I'm the Athletic Director here at Daniel Boone. Back in the fall, maybe even late summer, as you guys know, you approved for us to begin our first unified sports program, which is going to be track. Our student group and our faculty leaders have done a fantastic job of getting this program spearheaded, and I thought it was really important that they came to present to you all the hard work they've been putting in. I think it's also really important to recognize them because, as you guys know, with COVID here in the school and the difficulty that athletics has had, just trying to keep up, I really have not had a lot of time to invest in this program. And in fact, a number of schools have deferred this year in starting their Unified Track program. And I think it's important to look back at this group right here and both our student leaders, our champions, and our staff to say the reason why this program is going to go forward this spring is because of them. Really doesn't have a lot to do with the athletic department because we've been really busy, but this group has put so much time and effort, and I'm really, really proud of them and the fact that we're going to get this started at Daniel Boone. So, without further ado, can I get Lily, Will, Ethan, Shaq, and Mason? Did I get everybody? I think I got everybody. Renee and Renee, okay, to come on up and we're going to put this presentation up.
Guys, you're going to have to listen to me unless you guys don't look up to me.
No, we're coming down. Oh, there's a video of it, but I don't know if somebody has it.
No, I don't.
Everybody?
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, it's too loud.
That's alright.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ethan Crimmon. I'm in ninth grade. I'm a member of the Unified Champions. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here today and share our messages with you. As a unified champion, sorry. Alright, cool. As a unified champion, our mission statement is to develop an environment that promotes lasting friendships in the rest of community. As we've got a wonderful logo created by Brianna Squire. And we have the video of why we live unified, some of our members.
My name is Duffey. I'm sophomore. I choose to live unified because I like sports teams, hang my friends, and I like Daniel Boone.
My name is Ethan Crimmon. I'm in ninth grade. And I live unified because I strive to see my community stand out instead of one day. My name is Will Gaskins. I'm a sophomore. I'm part of the cross country team and a member of Connections. And I live unified because I want everyone to.
My name is Doc Calendar. I'm a senior. I'm graduated this year. I got my jersey. I'm unified. I'm pretty busy. I'm only a one.
My name is Lily Ferguson, and I'm an 11th grader. I'm a part of Connections Program, and I'm also a wellness intern. The reason I choose to live unified is so that everybody can be a part of a team and everyone can feel welcome and appreciated in their.
Hi, my name's Leanne. I'm a senior, also Level 3 Hell Fox student at BCTC. The reason I want to live unified is that I want to help create a community that fosters lasting friendships and also helps to foster acceptance in our community too.
Hi, my name's Hannah Huddelson. I am in ninth grade, and I am a part of the Connections Program as well as the field hockey team. And I live unified because I want to make sure everybody in the world has a safe place that they can be themselves.
Hello, my name is Mason Dolivet, and I'm a senior. Those were just some of our members. We have a lot more that we've been adding in as we continue to develop our program. And these members include... Doc Calendar, Megan Duffy, Lily Ferguson, Chloe Freeze, Lil Gaskins, Leanne Squire, Hannah Huddelson, Mimi, Avery Kessler, Ethan Crimmon, Daniel Meyer, Marley Petro, Devon Brennan, Renee Amber, Nicole DeWong, Sylvia Lynn, Maya Pavel, Jennifer Bryant, Katie Gerlin, Mrs. Mackowski, Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Duffy, Mr. Flowers, and Mrs. Huddelson.
Hi, my name is Will Gaskins. I'm in 10th grade. To educate ourselves about inclusion and to assess our school's environment, we watch videos and assess our future, or we plan for our future. There are four modules. During module one, we assess our school's environment through cards, which we should include at a different level of inclusion. And we decided that our overall goal for the school should be a lasting friendship. During module two, we watched two videos and discussed whether each is a lifetime friendship or a feel-good moment. And we decided that we all prefer a lifetime friendship over a family friendship.
My name is Lily Ferguson. I'm a 11th grader. During module three, we partnered with our mentor school, which was Dallas Town, and we got an interview called Together at Our Group, and we came up with questions that we wanted to ask our mentor school to learn more about their program. And we learned what their school experience was like after our meeting last week, and we learned what their community changed. And during module four, we started brainstorming action plans, which you'll see on the next slide, and we also create our mission statement and we have a video.
My name is Mavon Gindas. I'm unified and have some fun. So... Again, live in your foods and have some fun. And I do cardio a lot. Like, yeah. Like, unit a day, like, have some fun. Like, coloring newspapers and... Welcome. Welcome to Unified and... Then games and most physics. It's real confidence. It's so tedious. And it's so jazzy. My name is Mayol Diaz. Thank you.
My name is Renee Amber. I'm a 11th grader, and there are some questions you can ask yourself if you would like to get a call. Do you know a student who you think would want to become a Unified Champion leader? Do you know a student who you think would like to become a member of Unified Track and Field Team? Or are you interested in helping our Unified Champions to live unified at Daniel Boone Area High School? We'd love to welcome everyone to live unified.
Thank you for letting us present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Mrs. Schmidt said it sounds like we're going to be one of the first in Berks County that have our team running. Is that correct?
For track, yes.
Oh, great. Congratulations, everyone. It sounds like you guys have been doing a lot of, lot of work to make this happen. Thank you. The rest of our meeting is going to be really boring, but you can stay. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
You're going to miss a lot of fun.
Very well done. Alright, moving on to the less fun part of the job. So, for finance, we have basic course credit approval, BCIU for next year, proposed budget, and Blackboard learning. I think that might be a new addition. I don't think we've discussed the Blackboard in the, with the whole group yet. Is that correct?
I'm going to have to let Scott. That's our, the difference between School G and Blackboard. I mean, I'm not going to have a finite need to guess on that.
Is he here today?
We can, we can administrate. We can start doing, yeah.
Um, do you want to, we will have a full discussion of everything that happened in the committees, and then we can talk about it there, but this, this particular one, since it's a, since it's a money outlay, if we could just give the broad strokes for the books that work in technology majority.
So, essentially, Blackboard, for those of you who take an online course, I think that's probably most of us in this room at, you know, post-high school level, is a learning management system where teachers will be able to post and create courses on the virtual learning platform. As we look down the road for our integration with EBA digital learning and our in-person learning, this is a platform that allows us to do it. It's very analogous to School G. And the cost point, price point is they're about the same as School G, which will be looking to first go, I believe, sixth to 12th, and then ultimately fifth grade as well in transition year, but not, not in the first rollout, so.
From my, from my notes, one of the biggest things was accessibility.
Right.
Translations, ADA compliance, things of that nature. So, things that School G didn't have is one of the things that I had in my notes. Better, quicker lesson delivery, larger organization. Again, I don't want to get into, I don't have the deep understanding you have, Mr.
I want to go a little deeper in the technology part, but we'll, the ADA piece is a big fact. It is ADA compliant, which School G is not, so it has complete access. Additionally, Scott believes that it stages us better for 10 years out. School G lightly, we will outgrow the functionality of School G here in the next year or two as we begin to bring more courses online in terms of technology.
Yeah, I asked, speaking to what Mr. Struble mentioned, my question during technology meeting is, do we really need to do this now? Because it is going to be another system that parents and students are going to have to learn. But, you know, the accessibility issue, the administration feels and the committee agree that the accessibility issue is a significant stumbling block in School G and that it is necessary to make the change.
Two other, two other things I just like to put, like, read in notes down was mobile app affirmation, which is a big piece for that, so it made it mobile reading. The other one was that you can download content. So they were the two big, they were two other.
Yeah, they can download content and work offline if there is, if there is a reason to be concerned about your Wi-Fi at home, or if you're going to be away, away from home somewhere else, you can download your work and then go work offline for the day, which can be a significant problem sometimes.
Yeah, for some.
For some.
And there is an integration with our current website, Blackboard, and Connect, that's a deep service, so there's an integration factor that this brings to the table that current School G does not.
So, any, any other questions for the administration on, and that, or any of the other things under finance? Any public comments on anything under finance? Seeing none. Programs. We have a presentation with school calendar for next year. District riding school agreement, which is a standard that is always, any concerns from the board on any of those?
Can you use second gear?
They don't open.
What's, the calendar?
Yeah, you're right.
I think the down one's when it's self-filed.
Oh, it's down to the bottom.
It's in the bottom. Here it is, yeah. Didn't, didn't download.
The Chromebooks aren't working, that's all. Alright, so that is something we can, we can fix by?
Think so. We could probably, we could, we could probably put it in a PDF document out of a Excel.
I think that's normally what she does.
Yeah, we can do that. But just to give the board a summary, the first Student Day is, and this is calendar for 21, 22, would be the Thursday, the 26th. That is very, parallel to where we were going to start this school year for 2020, 2021. However, if you remember, we didn't make the adjustment to the school calendar, pushed that back a couple days to give the teachers a few more in-service days. We had moved it around. So this, this replicates what we had first approved for the 2020, 2021 school year, current school year, last year at this time. There is another Teacher In Service Day embedded within the calendar this year because from contractual standpoint, we had an additional workday for the staff, professional staff to use as a in-service day, Teacher In Service, continual learning, which is a priority of the district for professional staff. There's one in September, one in October, one in November, then one in January, and one in March. And that's preceded by three to start the school year off, and as the typical flex day that teachers get in the summertime in a two-week time span. And then the last Student Day is scheduled for the 3rd of June, Friday, the 3rd of June. And also embedded within this calendar are the flexible instructional days of which we've been utilizing this year as well, so that we're going to have to add to the back end of the school year or start bending into the spring break for us to make updates.
Okay, so any of these that don't open, if there's, if there's anything that you would plan to fund between now and the voting meeting, please reach out to the appropriate administration member. If you think the rest of us will be all on the same question, you can put it to everybody. If there's any reason that we can't have a full discussion of it today, we can talk about moving into the, to the future. You can take it out, but maybe we can move it to a future meeting. Not, 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 I don't think that's the calendar falls under that, you know, that you needed to, you know, read 80 pages of stuff before the meeting, but we'll, we'll get this fixed so that if you go and get it between now and the next meeting, it'll be, it'll be able to be here on the program. Any questions about the, anything under, under programs for now, for the administration? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. We have our personnel, retirements, leaves, appointments. We might have an assistant principal of the high school to talk about techniques. And anything else under there? There might be some, there might be some changes, plus or minus, on the coaches list by next, by next week, but most of it is said. There are some blanks, there are some things that might change, but if there are, we'll put them in the next meeting. Were there any specific questions from the board for the AD or from the administration?
So there were potential candidates?
Of your, of your groupers. It was on the last meeting, and then they took it off at the last minute, so there might be a base picture.
Right, we have, we're continuing to go perform second round interviews. This week, we have two scheduled, so anticipating being able to, anticipate being able to recommend somebody at that board meeting. We weren't unable to find a fit with the first group that we went through, so we went back to drawing for a sensitive commitment.
I know that I could really use the help, but you know, I'd like to find the best candidate as well, so.
I did have a question regarding the volleyball, has there been any applications for the volleyball?
I don't know if I have volleyball.
Boys volleyball?
Yeah, it's on here.
If there is.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, any, any other questions? Any public comments? Hearing none, moving on to pre-presentations. Any secretaries, correspondence, Mr. Scott?
I have no correspondence or letters or anything to read for it, it's me.
Okay. BCIU report, Mr. Miller?
Yes, we have a virtual meeting. It was a school director, typically the annual event for the back is they have a big art show at the BCIU.
Yes.
We had a plan, maybe it was just virtual this year. Sierra Berry was represented for Daniel Boone. Everybody in the county has someone that is, has a piece of artwork that's displayed at the BCIU. It's a nice program. Well done virtually, not quite the same as being in person, but it's helped. That's really, they were rather, I guess the main highlight of the board actions is they were quite a bargain, they were really, you know, media association was approved for three years, July 21st, June 24th. We've seen, it was pretty quick, the budget was approved, the payments, the accounts of the district remained the same.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions for us from BCIU? I know they've been really busy providing scores, but I'm sure that, yeah. Okay, moving on to BCTC. Ms. Thompson?
We met on January 27th. The main topic of the increase to the districts for the 2021, 2022 year of what we're going to do this next, and they're going to vote on that in February. Ninth grade enrollment is down this year, and next meeting is service.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Okay, moving on to student board, student board.
Okay. So, due to the end of the fall of high school, we only have a full, full academic school. The next month will have all of the schools attached to school as well. So, there are a couple students that we, we should recognize in our accomplishments at high school. So, first off, Jake Skouski, and the finalist, he has a contest at BCTC. Jessica Mellon, Lucas Foby, would nominate a student for their BCTC for the size of a little. Dalton Muller was selected to see the Y'all Mallage program this year, when the other side, me, Brownlee, and myself all placed second place at the in-level events at Future States America. And 10 others, student association had the competition last Saturday, and every single student competed, placed at least one event. So, as you can see, there's a lot of students who are going beyond a high school, especially the circumstances. So as you can see, a lot of students who are going beyond a high school, especially the citizens, can do amazing. And now you can see Luke, who has a lot of his.
Hello, I'm Luke Eriker. I'll be placing Jake Skouski for the student rep position. Something I wanted to add on is there's been a lot of opportunities for students to look to go on Zooms for entrepreneurship and for public relations. It's more of a long line, but some of our kind of style report, I guess we call it, and you can figure out the survey. It seems like a very good opportunity for students, especially since a lot of them aren't getting a lot of the extracurricular stuff that they usually get throughout the year. Like those types of things, things like that, that's all I have to add.
Okay, thank you. And congratulations with you on your L A T S and congratulations with students, congratulations both of you on L A T S. I didn't, I didn't see that coming out, so. Um, any, board, any questions for student reps? Okay. Thank you guys. Legislative report, Mr. Schrabel?
Well, good news. Our first, our first meeting's tomorrow. It's virtual. And I'll be driving somewhere. I'll have to get, but I have a meeting that's in New Jersey, so it should be interesting, but Dr. Prusinski dropped me up to take hold of.
Drive carefully.
So, so we'll, we'll see where it goes from there.
Alright. Is that a Zoom meeting, Hallway, ever since COVID? Has that been as?
First one, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, any other board members have report reports to give? Okay, um, any public comments on any presentations by the, by the board or by our student reps? Okay, moving on to number six. Got our monthly headcount. Do those look like they actually? Monthly headcounts? Any, any questions from the board on any of those? Any public comment? Okay, moving on to curriculum and instruction. Ms. Aubrey?
Um, hi, I'm Matt from National X.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, so we've had some further discussions about opportunities to learn about, to introduce if we wanted to hear more about mastery learning. The Blazer Teacher, we were saying Institute at that time, but a collection of like-minded people decided that probably better Blazer Teacher Academy for the summer program because of BTI, and people will be confused about where we'd be going. As well as Summer Academic Connections, which the group decided to continue to move forward. I feel like I'm missing one. As I'm looking for the recommended instruction note here, guys, what we're gonna do is we have two presentations in our next meeting. And those two presentations will be later Teacher Academy, which is a partnership with LaSalle and Regional Training Center for teachers. As well as Ms. Rapczynski, our coordination coordinator, will be here, kind of provide informationally what is going on in her program to some of the points that student report made. It's, you know, it's been difficult to have internships, but she has over twenty internships and apprenticeships going on right now for kids. So it's been a big lift, but I think she's done, done a good job, and I'll let her go into greater detail in our last meeting, the topic. I'll make sure I'm missing anything. The phase two virtual digital learning platform, we talked about the plan, how that's rolling out and integrating going forward. We have a presentation on the middle school language from Mr. Troy and Mr. Towers, which I think we have approximately fifteen students in that pro, not fifteen, fifteen different languages going on in that program, with over fifty students. With one, I thought, the best story of that, that night was, the, I think it was Arabic, a young man had taken Arabic, really facilitate language in his home. So I thought that was, that's really the unique part of the program. And so we're hoping that will grow and grow into the high school actually has an opportunity to be discussing more as we get down. So those, those are the topics for that. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Schrabel. Next meeting? That was February 20 seconds, is that right? Yeah, okay.
It is 20 seconds, I have to wait.
Any, any questions for the, for the board first, tonight, or the, or the recommended instruction, tonight? Any public comment? And moving on to extracurricular, oh, I think that meeting got canceled, right?
We did cancel. The only agenda I listed, we have the coaches that are the minutes on it.
Okay, there's really, it's all about, they're actually moving to March here. Okay. Um, any public comment on that? Facilities, Mr. Schrabel?
We got tonight, a couple of recommendations after our meeting. A gentleman named Doug Scott, Dawson Scott, presented a draft proposal for our Bell Cola, Coca-Cola products being offered in the school and into the admin area. And so that proposal, they kind of broke down. It was Pepsi, but their contract ended, they did not participate. So since they were participating in it, we feel that it's about fifty-five hundred to six thousand dollars additional income for sports activities, how it's broken up in between some of their, um, groups. So then that was recommended that we let them go ahead and draft their formal proposal for at that point. But it's one of those no brainers where, you know, a couple of machines in, they maintain them, and then we get the money from it. So it seems pretty fair. There was a problem with domestic piping issue. There's a large holding tank in this building where the water kind of holds that, for the high demand times, the water, lack of a better description of it. And over the years, it's filled with sediment, and now on occasion it disperses groundwater throughout the school. They flush it out, they tried different things, and so they need thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars to replace that tank with two smaller tanks. So we are recommending that they, we go ahead and put that on our voting. In our voting meeting for that, that all work to be approved and be completed. The children tower, they just want to let everybody know that that's been handled. They need to test it in mid-April, but can't test it now. Temperature's too low, but all the work's been completed. Fire system and testing contract, services contract has come up, and he had a couple of different bids, one from Mr. O'Brien, one from SSI, and then a third. And he feels most comfortable with SSI. They were within hundreds of dollars of each other. So we agreed that we shall let Stephen choose that company he wants to do business with. So that's fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, which will be adding to our voting committee's meeting as well. And then last, that I have on here is two things. Facilities, there's buildings, schematic storage area. In other words, all the blueprints, the schematics for electrical, all the, you know, mechanical, things of that nature, H E A C are kind of all stored in individual buildings. They're all over the place, copies. And so has a premier high school that was previously used to score steel in, the metal shop, I guess. And so he bid that out, and they want to kind of put all those drawings in one centralized location. And then once that happens, they already had a bunch of them already moved over to an electronic version, in case you ever do fire, water damage, whatever. Once they're here, they'll determine, be able to organize them, and then decide which ones need to be, which ones are missing. And so they'll have them scanned in, and it'll be one centralized location, kind of like a library for all the mechanicals, so. And schematics for storage areas, we'll have one spot for all of them. That costs around fifty-five hundred dollars to have halters to clean the room out, pull all the stuff up, put all the equipment together, I guess, and then have all the layers mixed into that room, so we're recommending that. And last thing was a report. Steve had mentioned that de-cleaning and maintenance programs are going extremely well. Couldn't be more pleased with both companies, halters and SSI. There was very few work orders. He was away for a week, I guess it was, and we came back to ten, you know, forty or a hundred. So even in his absence, the process is working. So the people that are involved in the process know what they're supposed to do, accomplishing that goal without, you know, direct oversight. So all these are great signs. And so he just wanted to give us a really great report on it. Then he also offered to provide access to the system where you can log in and check work orders if you want details. And we kind of really don't feel that that was necessary for anything. And if somebody wants it, they'll be more than happy to give you access to it. But we more, we opted, or have them provide some type of a report on quarterly basis, more of a summary versus work order five forty-nine didn't get accomplished because the tracking was in front of the door or whatever. So it's going very, very well, very, I thought it very positive, um, report for that.
So assuming if there was an item we wanted to get a report on, we could break down and ask, status of the work order.
Sorry, status of a work order, we could just break down and ask.
That's exactly what Mr. Schrabel and I both said, like, if there was something that we, we had, we desired to know about, that it was, you know, it was.
Like a softball kind of thing about.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's awful. So again, you know, you can ask this question, the fact that he was very open and join mentioning, hey, the fact that, you know, the fact you're offering this information, I just can't imagine learning a work order software platform. And then two, it wasn't read-only, Steve, so.
Great words.
I don't know if I want everybody's fingers in there, creating work orders or deleting one, or, so it just didn't, so he was, it was good.
Well, it's great news that the maintenance is going well. Did Chris question Snowman, how was that taken care of?
It's, it's snowing. They're, they're parking, I just, I talked to one of the halters. I think a hundred thirty hours straight or some crazy number. It's been a lot, a lot of work.
They get more practice this way.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
The expense is coming.
On the, um, holding tanks, are the two new tanks coming for the one that was sent in?
Sorry.
The two new tanks they need for the one, like?
Yeah, they have a seven hundred gallon one now, except it's way over built for the building.
It overflows.
Pardon?
It overflows?
No, it's filled up with sediment.
Right.
So there was a screen, there's a screen in there now to prevent that from when they backwash the systems and whatnot, but it's filled. And they tried to flush it out, it hurt things. They can't seem to get it to knock, kick out this groundwater. The groundwater stopped, but it's still going all throughout the school.
Yeah, he said that when, like, first of all, they tried to completely empty and clean them, and then a problem returned. But then what he noted when he was trying to diagnose what the issue was, was if, if we're constantly having kids coming through the buildings, the problem kind of goes away. But when we have several days in a row with no kids in the building, then, like, if you get up to, like, maybe four or five days of no, of no activity, then, then the problem returns, because like, you know, when the throughput is going through, you're just constantly, like, bringing water in and sending it right out, but that sediment, like, fills, fills up the tank when, when it's dormant.
Right.
But he has, but he said he's tried everything he can think of to do an actual clean out.
Can I cut in for a second?
Oh, you bet.
Do you want me to come up or?
Yeah, come on, just, just so we can hear you. Where you were helping him diagnose the problem.
Yeah, so I'm Colin Halter, I'm part of the maintenance team.
Yep.
I don't know if Steve didn't explain it, probably, like, this problem's still going on its current right now.
Absolutely.
So I'd go get a couple of water over the main part of the building, and it's gonna be ground, like, not like hoop ground, but like.
Yeah.
It's perfect.
Yeah, he just told us that it was significantly less.
And it's staining, like, all the sinks, it's staining all of the kitchen equipment, like, that's the kitchen nutrition group back there. All their stuff's like rusty colors and, so.
It's not iron, it's dirt.
It's dirt.
Yeah.
It's dirt. So I just wanted to clear up, like, you said something about occasionally, like, it's.
No, he just said it was worse, and it was, that's what he told us. He did say it was worse when the building was not being used ever.
Correct.
Yeah.
This, this recommendation is that we need to replace it definitely.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that whole holding tank.
Instead of going from, instead of going from one.
It just needs to go again, because it's, it's what it's holding is, and it's not gonna, there's no way to clean it. We tried.
He said instead of one tank, putting two gives you the ability to take one and get down while the other's still running. So it's gonna give them some flexibility, and the cost of two tanks, still volume-wise, was less because they're putting four hundred gallons back in instead of seven hundred, because they don't feel that it was necessary. And all this was done by that company, um, there was a company that came in, to Berkshire Capital, that came in and did the estimating for. So my question was, one, you could put a screen in there, it's one of our public order, we, you should see what comes in my house. I mean, I've got two buildings before it even hits my house. And they backwash automatically, and so I know from a commercial standpoint, there shouldn't, that's not part of this, but I think we should probably have them look at having something mechanically in there that will stop that debris from coming in before it gets into the new tanks. My second question was, you know, what do we do about what's already dispersed in the system? Does that come back to that thing?
Yeah, yeah, we can, well, when we do, we're gonna have to blow the whole system out anyway, so it's gotta be a summer project as well.
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
He asked a summer project, so.
Okay.
We don't have that.
We're only getting votes from the one company. Are we ever comparing, like, is that?
Kevin asked the same question, yeah.
It was through the consortium, I guess it was, and so you're getting, it's the same company giving you the quotes, just from a different direction.
Okay.
But yes.
Co-stores.
They know the building the best, so we trust them, have a good relationship with them, so they know, they know the system, they know this problem for a while now, so.
And I still didn't get the answer on the backwash. I think if we're gonna put a tank in, you gotta put some type of filter in there, because his point was, he said, how did it get in there like that? He said, there's a screen now, but doesn't think it was just there the whole time. So now that's, it's filled, it's filled with garbage, dirt, and all the mess that's been there, so you put a screen in now, it's just gonna keep.
And this tank's like the size?
Huge.
Like, is there, like, it's, it's huge?
That was the answer, yep.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you. And the cost of that was thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And I agree, my first question is, why wouldn't we bid it out? If that was the reason?
Any other questions on, on the, the, the water tanks or on anything else? Any public comment? Thank you for, thank you very much. Alright, finance meeting, Mr. Miller?
We had a brief meeting, and basically the main topic of the meeting was the presentation of the audit, who all figured out the audit. And I believe there was one finding that it really, it seemed to be fairly clean as opposed to the previous solid, there were four or five homes that were, the US, everything was addressed, I think, but the only finding was something to do with, because of the lack of resources and closing the books sometimes. That was really, we also had a budget workshop outside of the finance meeting where we came up with the recommendation to move forward military, to the maximum extent so that we could also keep the exemption, special education available to the safety. As Julie said, the anticipation is that we're not going to do that, but it's just, I had this one, the calendar didn't need to be as flexible as we think.
Isn't that happened every year the same way?
Absolutely.
Every single year we do the same thing, we take the maximum.
It's just because you're in January, but it's gonna be in June, we have no idea what the state funding is gonna be or anything else.
Right.
Um, do we have the, I think it'd be for the new budget workshop today, or are we gonna do that at the, at the next finance meeting?
We'll do it at the next finance.
Okay. One thing I will say for the budget workshop, I know that adding another meeting into everybody's schedule, you know, is, is like the worst thing ever. But, but I would just, I would just urge folks to at least attend a couple of them during, during the budgeting process. There, there are, you know, it's a lot to go through, it's a lot for the, the administrators that put them, to put the budgets together to go through, and having extra eyes. eyes with different experiences in different buildings actually really helps the process, so.
That's all I'll say.
Any, uh, any questions for, uh, Mr. Miller on, uh, finance? Any public comment? Um, moving on to policy, Mr. Scott.
So we went over six different policies, first reading, FM, LA, we had uncompensated leave, bonding, property insurance, other insurance and copyright material. Um, pretty basic, uh, we had minor changes there, but again, first reading, our next meeting would be March eighth, twenty twenty-one. If anyone has any questions?
Thanks, sir. Um, any questions for, um, Mr. Scott or administration on policy? Any public comment? Moving on to technology, Mr. Strobel.
Um, we went over.
We went over that one thing, yeah.
We went over one thing and I, I can't remember if we were supposed to put it in this next meeting or not. Um, I thought we were, um, for the internet service provider, it's going to wait for the following one after this one, because I know there was four people that, um, afford, there was four bids and I believe, um, the in-house was the cheapest.
Yeah, I don't think that was pushed through before, that was informational still.
More informational.
Come on, come on, tell.
And it was actually, it was actually great information and they gave us, we had the opportunity to save, um, almost half and then get double the speed. Um, so it's going to be one point five gigabyte versus, it was like thirteen hundred fifty dollars a month versus twenty-eight hundred. So there's a nice savings there and, um, so we get better. Um, you all like registration, kickoff was this month, they can party digital, um, we can handle, we're able to handle families now, even though our free reg, which was a big piece for it, so it's going to make it a lot easier for people to help the kids go up to higher form again. Um, and then final stage for telecom happens, um, just finishing up little items, elevators, things of that nature. Um, that was, I think that was better.
Okay. And next meeting, May February twenty-third. Um, any questions for Mr. Strobel on technology? Any public comment? Okay, uh, old business, voting meeting, minutes from last month. Any questions? Any public comment? New business, oh, we have new business discussion related to communications of district COVID-19 cases to community stakeholders. Who would like to explain the administration's, uh, reason for bringing this forward? Is that you?
Yeah, I, I can speak to it and, um, certainly our resident, uh, doctor of COVID-19, Mr. Hurley kind of filling the gaps here. But, um, the, the intent here, we, we have a lot of communication that goes out, um, now it has slowed down in the past week, week and a half, uh, and it's, it's a template that goes out every time we have a COVID case. And taking a look at some, um, correspondence from other school districts, um, we have a page on our website and a dashboard that is pretty robust and gives accurate information. So, uh, what we were looking to do is instead of sending something out with every individual case that we have, um, and even though some students may not have, um, or staff may not have been in the building during the infectious period or whatnot, it doesn't compromise our in-person instruction capabilities as per our guidance from the Department of Ed. Uh, we felt that, um, although communication is good, um, I think some, at this point of this pandemic, uh, it's becoming, uh, a little cumbersome for recipients. So we felt as though we can do something a little bit different where we post an update via the dashboard and if it's a case or cases that compromise in-person instruction that would force a school building to have to shut for a certain length of time for in-person instruction, we would communicate that through a connected messaging system with, uh, email correspondence, text message and film correspondence. Otherwise, we will be placing this correspondence directly in our, on our website on a daily basis. Now, we would, if the board would agree that this is a direction we can go, we would send one final correspondence out to our, um, community, um, and indicate this is the direction we would be, be heading, moving forward and to access that website link on a daily basis to see the updates.
So one of the questions I had, is this going to necessitate us to, um, make small edits to our COVID health and safety plan?
I, I don't believe so, only because, uh, it's a bad in there in our communication to the, uh, community on, on the, um, cases, but I'll defer that to Mr. Hurley.
Yeah, it's worded broadly enough in terms of what our communication is that we can do this without changing the health.
So communicating, um, to, to mean like putting it up on the website and then we, we make a decision if we always add an email, an email and text if it makes a change to, um, like if a building closes for a couple of days? That, that, that like is, is within what we already covered?
Yeah, it was written pretty badly, it was going to give us the flexibility to modify our plan, I assume.
I, I have a question about that.
Yep.
Instead of going from, you know, over communicating, basically, I didn't feel like it was over communicating, but, you know, and I see how somebody can say, hey, this is me, you know, to posting on the website, the summary and just expecting people to go there versus maybe somewhere in the middle where once a week, send a link, send the link, it's the same link to the same spot, um, hey, if you want an update on COVID, here it is. So it's one email a week, but it's just, I can just touch a note to it versus it's just a reminder. There's just a lot of people that aren't going to go back to the webpage, I mean, just as a thought.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but I think those people who are so concerned about it, they'll know where to look and they'll take the time to do it themselves.
Right now, it's sending a weekly email and people have to go out and log in, there's really not any information for them. I mean, they, they really don't care about whether schools are going to be open or closed and necessarily what somebody had COVID hasn't been able to interpret that.
Yeah, and, and that, that information about, like, if, if there are people that are virtual only, that would still show up on the dashboard, right? For instance, like, the people who are virtual only, who, who have notified us that they are positive, you know, right now, we have to notify, we're notifying everybody in the district that that person is positive, so now that person, that is a show up on the dashboard, correct?
Are they separated though, so that people can see that?
It, it already is.
It is on the dashboard.
Like, to make sure it's cool.
Yeah, absolutely.
It gives a fourteen day rolling count on total reported, reported cases and filtered down by building or district. And then it also adds something separates this case by the main impacted person, it's correct.
Yeah, it's like staff in building, staff.
Cause I can see people getting great communication.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, and, um, I, I think it's a good idea to make the change, everybody agree.
Agree, absolutely.
I, I mean, I, there is nothing wrong with the way we did it and I think that if we were going to err in any way when it came to what we did back in September, over communicating was the way to go. Um, but we are at a point where people have become comfortable, most people anyway, have become comfortable with a certain level of, you know, there, there's always a handful of folks in the community who are coming in positive and, um, that we're handling it pretty uniform across the board, um, and we're keeping that fourteen day rolling count for each building. Most people kind of understand that and, um, I think that, um, at this point, maybe pulling back from that communication, it's just, every other day, we've gotten, sometimes more like every day, sometimes there's one in the morning and there's one in the afternoon. Um, but, you know, I think that this, this would be a good change, there's nothing wrong with the way we've been doing it, I just think that it might be time to pull back from it.
I agree and I, I agree that we did it the way we did, as long as we did, because I know there's a lot of other districts that aren't recording all of those things. You know, I think we would love to get on by doing that and I appreciate that. So, so I think it's good to have that, it's calm down a little bit, power of land, settle a little bit.
I agree. And, um, any other, any other comments? I, I think we're just good with just making the change.
Okay.
Unless I hear, unless I hear otherwise from the board right now?
Can I just ask for, um?
Yep.
My second graders, uh, there was a kid in his class that got pulled off, but I wasn't notified because my son had to quarantine and I feel like I should have been notified. I, I only figured it out from classes, I mean, a couple of elimination, but I feel like there was a kid in his class. They only quarantine the kids that's in our family.
Right, and that's, and I, I mean, I'll let Mr. Hurley speak to that, but the, the ones who have to quarantine notified at their phone within the, the guidance of six foot for fifteen minutes.
I, I understand that, but I, I still like, uh, my kid probably plays with that kid at recess or something, just to at least let the parents know that there was, but your, your, your child has been named, it doesn't need to quarantine, but just to like know to keep it on your side or just in case he has develops and those.
I think the, one of the reasons why, again, this is one of the negatives to your point right there is, is this, one of the reasons why the letters were sent out was to notify the entire building of a positive COVID case in the building. Um, however, the close contacts as defined by the Department of Health, this student has to be within six feet for a total of fifteen minutes within a twenty-four hour period, um, that's considered a close contact. All of those parent, all of those students and those parents are obviously quarantined at that point in time and they're also contacted at that point in time. That's been our current practice as a school district. Um, I think you also have to look at that and balance that, and again, this can, this can be for further discussion, but if, if you do go down that road, you're looking at it from a second grade standpoint only. If you start doing that in a high school where a student has ten different classes, um, that, that's another ball flacks completely. And so, um, but what I can assure you though is every person who is a close contact, um, is notified and their students are quarantined, that's part of the Department of Health.
Okay, did, it, are you still, are you comfortable with making this change, knowing, knowing that that's the?
Oh, I, I am happier with the, the last notification, that was the only, the lack of communication there, I would have, I still felt like the kid in that class.
Yeah, I think that.
They spend all day together.
Yeah, I think that what Mr. Hurley was getting at is that, you know, we get to the point where, like, you know, there's the, the kids that are right around that, in that person's circle, right? And the, the notification that went out to all parents that there was, there was a, a case within the school, that was the notification that, hey, you know, your kid went to school with, you know, so, and, and I, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, you're not getting that at the, at the classroom level. Um, it, it is, um, and it might be feasible to do at the elementary level, but, but that's, that's not what the help, that's not what the Department of Health's recommendation is to, you know, for the notifications. And, you know, every time we, we expand beyond what the Department of Health says is the recommendation, um, that's like twenty some odd more calls that, that the, that have to be made where, you know, being notified that there was a case within that school probably takes care of those people that have, like, very little or a small interactions with that student or teacher. You know, I understand it's not, it's not ideal, it's not perfect. Do we have any other comments on the way we're doing it right now? And the way we're going to make this change? I think it's a good change. So, all right, and I talked long enough that my, my computer turned off. Um, so was, um, any public comment on, uh, the COVID, the COVID notifications? Um, any public comment on any issues? It seemed none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
Mrs., Mrs. Albrede, Mrs. Leone, my, um, meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody.